We call it GADA. GADA is, means a lot of different things. But one of the things that it means is the grants that you receive have to be reported in a different way, in a different format to them than this report. And that's been going on now for about three or four years. And we've got that report ready to go. We've got our opinion on it. I have a copy of it in the master copy of the report. And we will submit that electronically for you as well tomorrow. So we'll get those taken care of. And then the last thing is the county requires a copy of your audit report as well. Just the one that you have in front of you and a copy of the comp controller report. And we've got that all ready to go. And I will take that back to my office and give that filed for you. We take a stack of them when we're done with the audit season and just file them all at once. So we'll get all of that administrative stuff taken care of for you and you'll be good to go. As far as the numbers are concerned, we got a lot going on here in the city. We got a lot of projects that we're working on. And so I just want to highlight some of those numbers for you here tonight. To do that, I brought some charts with me, some colored charts. You have those in front of you. These numbers correlate with the numbers that are in the report. But I like to use these charts to go over the numbers just because I can show you a history of what's happened over the past several years versus me just spouting out single year numbers. I think it's a better tool for you to use. Just shows you some trends that are happening. It's a little easier to absorb as well. So we'll start with that. They should be in the same order as mine. Let me know if they're not. But the first one you should have in front of you is the general fund. In the general fund, all these charts, by the way, are formatted the same. We've got the blue, red, green. Those represent the years. And we're going to talk about what happened to cash, what happened to revenues, what happened to expenses on each of these charts. The general fund there, you'll see your cash balance, which came in at a little over a million dollars, was up by about ninety-eight thousand this past year. And so we'll talk about why that happened, how that happened, okay? To do that, of course, we have to look at your revenues and your expenses, plus a few other things like transfers. Your revenues you'll see there went from six hundred and eighty-nine thousand to eight hundred and eighty-four thousand. Again, this is just the general fund. That's a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar increase over the year before. So what I do is when we have a significant increase, I take a look at some of the bigger things that make up that increase, just to kind of highlight it for you. Of that hundred and ninety-five thousand increase, a hundred and twenty thousand of it related to Illinois taxes being higher this year. That's like sales tax, use tax, tobacco tax, all that kind of fun stuff. I've noticed that all of my entities that I've done so far, there has been an increase in those revenues. Some of it has to do with timing differences with, you know, they get behind, they catch up. And some of it has to do with just growth. I mean, it wasn't too long ago here, right? We opened up some new businesses, I believe, Dollar General, right? A couple of years ago. And so when those new businesses open up, more revenue is spent in the city, which generates more prop- or not property, sales tax for the city local tax, okay? So that was good to see, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase. And then most of the rest of that increase was ARPA money that we received. And we're going to receive a little bit more, I believe, this year. And so some of that increase in cash is money that will be spent. It's just not been spent yet, okay? But still, a solid year. Expenses you'll see went up as well. They came in at about five hundred and eleven thousand. That's a fifty-five thousand dollar increase. Some of the larger items that made up that increase this past year, legal fees were up by about nine thousand. Professional fees were up by about nine thousand. Office expenditures were up by about eight thousand. We had some engineering fees that were a little higher than the year before by about six thousand. And phone expense was up by about three thousand. Those were the biggest ones. Oh, and I had one more, I'm sorry. And travel was up by about three thousand. The travel was due to conferences that we went to and I don't think the year before we did.
We did, yeah.
So. As far as the net income goes, when you take the revenue minus the expenses, we ended up with a three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar net income. So what I like to do now is just explain why cash is not up three hundred and seventy-three thousand, right? Because we have a net income of three hundred and seventy-three thousand. And that's because this chart does not reflect transfers in and out to other funds. And it also doesn't reflect large capital expenditures, you know, like projects that you have going on. So I just tell you those numbers verbally. So we have three hundred and seventy-three thousand net income. We had transfers out to other funds of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And a good chunk of that was the home, non-home rule money. You know, we collect that and then we move it over to a savings account in another fund and save it for special projects. And then we had about ninety-eight thousand dollars of capital expenditures in the general fund last year. Assets, you know, that were depreciating. And so when you net those numbers together, that's about a ninety-eight thousand dollar change in cash. So the general fund numbers look good, look solid. Increase in cash, even when you back out the ARPA money, still, you know, stable cash and a good cash flow in the general fund. The special revenue funds, the next chart, we won't spend a lot of time on because these funds just collect levy monies and then out, yeah. And there's timing differences, you know, when we spend some of those monies. But you will notice, I'm sure, the increase there, and I want to explain that because normally there's not this large of an increase in cash in special levy funds. Three hundred and ninety-two thousand, okay? The special revenue funds here on this chart is all of your special property tax funds and the motorfield tax fund combined in this chart, okay? And so the reason why cash was up three hundred and ninety-two thousand has to do with the jurisdictional transfer that we had, that huge transaction in the motorfield tax fund last year. Because you'll see here the revenues, which I did not include those numbers in this chart, revenue and expenses, just because I didn't want to skew it. I wanted it to kind of, you know, show you what in a typical year you have. You know, your revenues and your expenses there, you can see, are fairly level from year to year and your net income as well. But when you take your net income of sixty-seven thousand and then you add the nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars that we've got in that grant, or I don't know if it's technically called a grant, but the jurisdictional transfer money. And then we spent six hundred and forty-five thousand of it out. I believe that went to a township, because they're part of it. You know, that results in that change in cash of three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So a good chunk of it is sitting in that motorfield tax fund. Your proprietary funds, we'll spend just a little bit of time here on because you have a lot going on in your proprietary funds. You have, you know, large projects that you're working on. The water fund, we'll talk about first, and then we'll talk about the sewer funds. So the water fund, you'll see here, your cash balance has been declining just a little bit year over year. But you've had projects you've been working on that's been using some of your reserves. Your cash balance was down by a hundred and six thousand dollars this past year. But your revenue figures are fairly stable, right? They're coming in roughly two hundred and twenty thousand average over the last three years. And your expenses, you can see there, are very close to the year before as well. So we're holding the line with expenses, revenues are stable, net income is stable. You see, we had thirty-one thousand, thirty-nine thousand, and now fifty thousand. So the numbers, even though the cash balance is declining a bit, you know, still looks, looks good from an operational standpoint. It's just we've had these special projects in both of these funds going on that's, you know, taken a little bit of our reserves. So we had a net income of fifty thousand and then transfers in from other funds of twenty-nine thousand. And then we had a hundred and twenty-seven thousand of debt forgiveness from Illinois EPA. So that was money coming in. And then we spent three hundred and eleven thousand on the projects in this fund. And that all nets to that decrease in cash. The sewer fund had an increase in cash of about a hundred and ninety-three thousand over the year before. The revenues, you can see there, are fairly level from year to year, especially the last two years. Expenses are up by about thirty-four thousand in the sewer fund. And again, these are just operational expenses, you know, not the project. I'll give you those numbers separately. I took a look to see why expenses were up thirty-four thousand and most of it had to do with just repairs and maintenance were higher in fiscal year twenty-two versus fiscal year twenty-one. A couple of the things that stuck out to me when I kind of looked at that detail. And so these things might ring a bell to you. We had some tree line work where we cleared, cleared some tree. I'm assuming this sounds familiar to you, right? You did some tree line work. You did some dozer work and you had some pretty large pump repairs. So those things, for those of you who were on last year, probably ring a bell, right? But again, cash reserves still are healthy. But again, you have a lot going on in these funds. So you're going to want to continue to monitor, obviously, your cash reserves as you continue and make your way through these projects that you're working on. You'll want to make sure that you're adjusting rates when that's necessary. You've already done that and you've been doing that. In fact, I believe in May, last month, no, two months ago, there was an increase. So next year when I'm here, you know, those revenue figures will reflect that and I'll report back on that. But just continue to monitor that as you work your way through these projects like you have been doing. Because sometimes it's hard to envision all of that because there's such large numbers that we're talking about, you know, with those, those projects that we have going on in the sewer and the water fund. One number that I always report to you each year is your percentage of gallons pumped versus billed in the water fund. You don't have that in front of you. There is a copy of this in the master copy of the report. If you'd like to see all the calculations, even has like what the average monthly bill is per customer and has like a history of it. So Angel's got that, if you're interested in looking at that. So we monitor this each year just to kind of see where we're at. This past, this past fiscal year, your pumped versus billed accounted for percentage was about sixty-six percent. That's an increase over the last year. The prior year was about fifty-nine percent. So that was good to see. Some losses expected due to backwashing, meter errors, leaks, you know, flushing, internal use.
We had a fire.
Yes, yeah. I think Jack did mention that to me, yeah. So we're going to have, you know, we're going to have, we're not going to have a hundred percent, you know? As far as your percentage.
Yeah, two fires.
What's that?
We had two fires.
Yeah, multiple. Yeah, I think I remember Jack mentioning that. You should continue to monitor, you know, this. I know Jack is monitoring it as well. And he tries to account for big things for me that's not billed, just so that I know about them. But sometimes that's hard to do and especially, you know, when there's a fire. Sometime, I mean, I don't know, I don't think they take the time to meter that, right? Because they gotta go, they gotta go get the fire out. And so he's estimating some of that for me so I can factor those into my calculations each year. A lot of my cities, it's kind of all over the board. It ranges from this percentage being around seventy, which is close to where you're at now, all the way up to ninety. It just depends, you know, because each city does it just a little differently and accounts for internal use and all that kind of fun stuff a little differently. Plus, it depends on the age of your system. You know, the older your system, the older your meters, the more loss there will be, the more flushing that will have to happen and so forth. Okay, but we'll keep, continue to keep an eye on that for you and report that back to you each year. But it was good to see that percentage increase this past year by seven percent. As far as the report goes, I just want to point out a couple of pages and then we'll wrap up here because I know you still got a lot on your agenda. In the report itself, we've talked about the numbers, okay? But I want to explain to you what is in the report as it relates to our letters, okay? Which are towards the front of the report. The first letter that we have starts after the table of contents. So it's on page one, two, three, and four. So it's a four-page letter. This is the actual report that states that we did the audit and that we believe the numbers in this report to be accurate, okay? It means we did all the procedures we needed to do. We tied out all the numbers. We confirmed bank accounts. We confirmed the loan balances. We examined on a test basis, you know, receipts and invoices and all that kind of fun stuff. So this says that we did the work that we needed to do to say that we believe the numbers in this report are accurate, okay? Which the numbers on the charts we went over earlier come from this report. It's just formatted a little differently, okay? So that's what IEPA is looking for, is what the comp controller is looking for and so forth, all right? The other report that we issue each year is on page five and six. This is a government auditing standards report. We're required to issue a report like this when other agencies require it. And because you have a lot of activity going on with IEPA, generally speaking, they require the audit to include this report, you know? And some of our smaller entities, if there's not a lot of grant stuff happening, we don't have to have this report in here, okay? But you're, we're required to have it in here for you. So this report just lets the readers of the financials know whether or not we came across any internal control-related matters that needs to be disclosed to the readers of the financials or any compliance-related matters that need to be disclosed. So the compliance issues, for example, would be like if we came across a material over expenditure budget, right? You went over budget in a particular fund, we'd have to put that in here. Or if we came across any compliance-related matter with the grant, okay? We didn't do a compliance audit, but if we come across those things, we disclose them in here. We did not come across any compliance-related issues that needed to be disclosed in this report. So there are no compliance-related matters in this report. The only thing that we have in this report is just due to your size that we have each year. We have it for all of our small entities that we audit. Whenever we have an entity that does not have an accounting department, let's just say, with multiple people in the accounting department who can totally separate all of the accounting functions, the person who does payroll would not be the same person who does bank reconciliations would not be the same person who writes checks, would not be the same person who makes deposits. And you have a few different people to separate some things, which is great. But we can't separate everything. It's just not the way small government is designed. And it's just not economically feasible for you to do that. And so we just have to mention in here that not everything is segregated. But it doesn't mean that you're not doing things to help lower your risks as it relates to that. For example, you're closely monitoring your financial activity at the board level, right? At the committee level, which is fantastic. You're asking questions. I witness that, you know, every, every year when I'm here, which I love to see, right? We're asking questions. We're making sure we understand bills that are being paid and what they're for. I encourage you to continue to do that. When we do an audit of a small government, which is mostly all that we do, we do a few big ones like table of cities and table of schools. But for all of our smaller governments that we do audits for that doesn't have an accounting department with all the different functions segregated, we're doing additional testing too, like when we're here. We're looking, for example, at salaries very closely. Are they board approved, you know, especially for key people, right? We're looking at reimbursement checks to key people. Is there receipts for it? Does it look like it have, has city purpose to it and so forth? So we're doing additional testing. You guys are monitoring things closely. And so if there's no new action that you need to take as it relates to this, you just need to continue to be, you know, diligent on your end. And we'll continue as well to do those additional procedures. And so this is as clean, you know, as clean a report as small entity can get. And it's, it's basically identical to last year's report. The only other thing that we came across, which is not in the report and a copy of it is in the master copy. We did have one recommendation, okay? This is not a, a fine, this is just a recommendation. One of the things that we do each year is we do send a letter to the county to confirm whether or not all of the appropriate officials have filed their economic interest statement with the county. Because technically, if you don't, then they can do things like, you know, slow up your property tax payments and things like that. So, or at least that's my understanding. I've never seen them do that.
But it is a law that you had to.
Yeah. And, and we, you're one of our early audits. So, you know, some of this could be a timing difference and some, some of these individuals maybe have already filed now. But as of the date that we confirmed it with them, which was June second, there was a few individuals that they're saying still needs to have that filed. And so she's got a list of those individuals or no names, name, I'm like.
Yeah, she said that, right.
You know, so I just encourage you to follow up on that and just make sure everybody gets that filed.
Because Travis will need a new one now because he just got on the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually the courthouse sends us a letter, it's missing.
They, well, we're early. They will eventually, they'll start marking. But I figured we could on top of them, get ahead of the game.
They send those to our houses, right?
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah. She'll reach out to everyone who needs to do it. But first, you might want to call the county and just make sure that nobody's done it in the last thirty days. That way you're not having somebody do it twice, okay? So that's the only other thing that we came across that we wanted to recommend. I want to just make sure the board knows that we appreciated, you know, everyone's help while we were up here, you know, everyone involved, got us the information that we needed when we asked, even outside parties, you know? Mark, God bless him, him and his firm, you know, have to track down stuff for me as well. Contracts and figures and commitments and we appreciate, we appreciate them for sure. You know, the treasurer, the billing clerk, Janet, the superintendent, Derek, of course. Everybody, you know, really was very professional and timely and we really appreciated that. We did want to make sure that you knew that. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
Do you see anything we need to change?
If I, if I did, I would have recommended it to you, yeah. Yeah, and if I would have came across anything unusual, you know, I would have probably asked for a committee meeting first, you know? I don't normally surprise people with it.
Yeah.
We would have talked about it. No, everything would break.
All right. Now, I think we have a motion to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two audit.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And discussion, sing none, roll call please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Anna.
Appreciate it, yeah.
All right, up next, we have a motion to approve the attendance of the IML conference that'll run from September fifteenth through September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two for up to four city officials. This is something that I have attended. But you did mention, we did not have the conference in twenty of the COVID. But it is something that's a great learning experience. So I see a motion to approve that. Any discussion?
One thing, if you do want to go, let Janet know. We'll put this week, so she can use her register. I will say, Illinois Risk Management, our insurance, is sending somebody up for free that will take care of the registration. There would be the stuff, cover the hotel, so that's a good thing, so that's a saving.
All right, roll call please.
Burgess?
You had the motion, okay.
Yes, Burgess. Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right, up next, we have a motion to approve five thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents for the library from the TIF fund to do flooring. This is some flooring that's going to get done in the front end of their, of the library. I did tell Anna, I said, this is going to probably be it for a couple of years from the TIF. You're not going to get any more. I greatly appreciated her coming and I, you know, it's glad that we were able to help. But was, you know, other taxing bodies and other things move forward, that deal with TIF may be a little bit more conservative, so. And she was respectful of that. She appreciated that, so.
I'll make the motion for the five thousand three thirty-seven sixty-eight for the library from the TIF fund for flooring.
Perfect, Suzie. Do you have a second?
Where's this, is this in here?
It should be.
I don't see one for five thousand.
No, actually, the reason it's five thousand, so what happened was they had a friends of the library amount of twelve hundred dollars already raised to go towards a project. So what Anna did is they deducted that amount off the amount from the TIF request. So the five thousand makes up the difference between the twelve hundred they had and the six thousand dollar bid.
And this is what these are, the quotes?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Because there was one, one bid was six thousand dollars to do the entryway and the bathrooms and basically take care of all the flooring for the future. The other bid was eight thousand dollars and was just for the entryway. So she committed, so they used the twelve hundred dollars out of there from them and then we just covered the rest. Which actually are for the five thousand dollar part. If you take their part of what we take on TIF, it is almost exactly three years' worth of TIF money. So, and that's where we came up with, we basically gave them three years' worth of TIF money. Now, kind of in advance, more or less.
Exactly. All right, any discussion, roll call please.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
All right, up next, we have a motion to allow the purchase of new tires for the police department on Brian's, Chief Wade's squad car for one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars from Dave Reed's Automotive.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion, sing none, roll call please.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
All right, up next, we'll have ordinance number seven, eight, seven. And it's an ordinance to approve the purchase of playground equipment from Play Power Limited Farmington Incorporated for fifty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and one cent. This is something that Suzie and the park board, along with Jones. Stringer has worked on a lot to come up with some stuff for the park, so. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. I just was saying, you just get a motion to approve it. So if you want to talk anything about it, this is to get around. Since these are specialty items, you're doing the ordinance for this, so we don't have to do the bid.
Well, yeah, so this ordinance waves all bidding requirement, which is allowed for the municipal code and would allow this purchase. There were two options that we had to purchase, or there were two options that were provided to the, to the city. And we are accepting the ones without a hallway.
Yes. Right? This is being paid out of the Van Sycamore funds. All right, need a motion for it, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion, sing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
All right, up next, we need a motion to approve one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars for plumbing, the plumbing bill regarding stormwater sanitary service at Sloan's Implement. This is something we've, I have not heard, have you heard anything back from Sloan's about possibly getting reimbursed on it?
I have not, no.
Um, still going to work, we might end up getting this paid back, reimbursed, some of it from Sloan's. This is from Wes Horton. So this is something that I want to work on, talk to Jack tomorrow.
Is this where they went in and did?
Did all the sanitary.
They were cameraing.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion, sing none, roll call please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
All right, up next, we have a motion to approve the letter of intent with Petersburg Plumbing, who submitted the low bid for the city sanitary sewer project phase two in the amount not to exceed six million, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This is what the bid is for the second phase of our sewer project. Mark and I, we had the bid opening. Petersburg came in. Anything you need to add?
That's, that's basically it, yeah. I mean, just like last time, it is a big project. So we did get some contact from out-of-state contractors. You know, Petersburg is local. I think they did a great job on phase one, so, you know, we recommend moving, moving forward with. So this is notice of intent to award. It's not a formal award yet. So the, we need the city to agree that, yes, we're submitting it to the state. Then we'll wait for the loan agreement to come back with all the formal details to then formally award it. So it's not signing the contract right now for that, but it's one step closer.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second? You have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion, roll call, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
All right. Up next, we have ordinance number seven eight eight. It's an ordinance, ordinance amending the water control loan for the maximum amount from six million. That's what we did basically for phase two, for phase one, to eight million for sanitary sewer phase two. The reason that it is about a million dollars higher is that it includes engineering fees.
So it, it is, yeah, engineering and, I mean, as everybody's aware, the, you know, just the way the economy is, I don't want to say this, I'm actually happy how this came in. I was, I was really worried it was going to be much higher. And actually, I'll just make sure to clarify, the ordinance, seven six four was for six million five hundred five thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars. That's, that's what the original ordinance was. And I believe the ordinance we have amends it from that to the eight million, not, not just six million, sorry. But so that, that would, we need this to, it basically allows the city to borrow up to eight million dollars. That's not what our, you know, budget is, but that's just, you know, just kind of a ceiling that we have. We submit that list to the state, and then that'll also allow us to get that in the next step, the loan agreement. It'll come back to the board before we formally award it. But I need this to allow that, that ceiling to be raised to eight million. I have done, so the EPA requires that we do a five-year projection. And that just looks at, you know, how your account balance looks. And, you know, you just had your auditor go over on how your accounts were looking. They, they are, you know, it's going to be very close where you're going to be able to pay for, you know, both sewer phase one and sewer phase two, but it's trending upwards always, so that's, that's good. But you are going to deplete the, you know, you have your one percent sales tax that you did twenty sixteen-ish, you know, to help pay for the sewer project. And then you did a rate increase twenty seventeen, I think, for about thirty percent. And then, you know, we've implemented this five percent and that really helps show, you know, with inflation going up, you know, eleven percent it was last year, whatever, whatever it's been. That really helps show the account trending upwards. So, long story short, you know, we've looked at the numbers and the city appears we can, you can afford it. Need to amend this ordinance to allow the ceiling to be raised to eight million dollars, so.
Do you have a motion for ordinance number seven eight eight? I'll make that motion. You have a second?
I check in it.
All right. Any discussion, roll call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
All right. Up next, we have the motion to approve the following for the La Bruchelle project disbursement, Verdict Plumbing for fifty-nine thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Have a motion to approve that, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
All right. Up next, we have the motion to approve the following for the water project disbursement, Verdict Plumbing for fifty-nine thousand four hundred eighteen dollars. Division A engineering, three thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and fourteen cents, non-led. Have a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All right. Talking to Mark, you do not need to do the motion to approve the installation of the nitrate vessels for eighteen thousand four sixty-eight. That was in with the verdict price. So now we need a motion to approve the repair to well eleven for twenty-three hundred dollars, please.
Can we really do that?
We pay to have them inspected and done. This one, they actually found some old piping and an old pump that needed to be repaired on it, so.
Okay.
That's what we just needed to do. I'll make that one. All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
All right. Up next, we have the motion to approve the time extension of ninety days to September tenth, twenty twenty-two for the lead project and also for the nitrate vessels, so.
I'll make the motion.
All right. You have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have the motion to approve four thousand two hundred dollars for a service bed. That's three thousand dollars for the service bed and twelve hundred dollars for insulation. This is for Jack's water truck. Basically, we're putting in a toolkit in the back so that you'll be able to help haul his tools around. And this is coming from a place in Muequa. All right. All right. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
All right. Up next, discussion and action is necessary on sanitary sewer system phase one. Project items is properly brought to the board.
So we, the city did receive final, you know, loan closing paperwork for sewer phase one. We have received the, the last final check. So I'd say we're going to push, you know, get the final punch list items, you know, over this month and then we'll be able to release that final payment to Verdict. But right now, we're, we're holding it until everything's satisfactory with, with the city, so. That's it for sewer paperwork.
Perfect. All right. Up next, we have discussion and action is necessary on sanitary sewer system phase two. Project items is properly brought to the board.
This one's been on the, just on the agenda, so we'll get everything submitted to the state and then, you know, be in construction. I would say, you know, they're going to take sixty days, so it'll be, you know, probably fall, you know, before we're breaking ground. And that's even if we can get the materials coming that time, so keep everybody updated.
All right. Discussion and action is necessary on water system improvement project as properly brought to the board.
So this is the nitrate install, also the lead. That's what's remaining. So we're kept in the, we're keeping the lead service line project replacement open as La Bruchelle was being replaced. And, you know, when, as they went through there, they determined, you know, there, there actually wasn't as, as much lead as, that we, we maybe anticipated. But that still means we have other lead services in town that we want to focus on. So south of Samuel, between Illinois, there's a, an alley that, that's where we're going to look at replacing, using some of those funds. We're also running a sanitary sewer, planning to run a sanitary sewer down that alley. So that's why we kept it open to, you know, we, we didn't need it in La Bruchelle, so we're going to use it in that area. That'll help get, that'll water main out of service that's down that alley, get new service lines. It is, it is an old line that's in that alley. The nitrate vessels, they were installed. All the media's been in place. Right now, we're getting back tea samples to, you know, get, get tested and get, you know, put it in service. Once we're able to, able to do that, then we'll, we'll notify Greg and he can let the, you know, the proper authorities, I guess, know that where we're at in the, the process for the nitrate removal system. The reason why we are extending the, the, you know, ninety days, there are some, there is some equipment that we're still waiting on. Mag meters are, are an issue, you know, there's a delay on getting the mag meter. So we're, we are getting it operational, but there are going to be still some other things that kind of trail out just as the way the world is, waiting for, waiting for materials. But we're focused on trying to get it operational and in service. It's called a partial operation permit. Basically, that's what it's called. And once that happens, the EPA will be, should be happy that we're, we're at least, you know, moving steps forward to, to make it there. So that's, that's that project.
All right. Discussion and action is necessary on water system improvements phase two, the new water plant building.
So the city did receive an email for planning documents from the federal EPA. I have not looked at them. They came yesterday. Also, Stephanie Crossland did call me today, call me back. She was on vacation last week. She's our administrator for the city, for the federal EPA. So I actually, I think it, I don't know, I don't want to, you know, hedge my bets, I guess. But I think it's, you might be, I might be moving forward. I do, we'll have to go through, it is a new program, so we'll have to see what the requirements are for this grant funds. And that was, you know, the packet that was provided. So hopefully, that'll have some details that we can, we can get ironed out and maybe, maybe be advertising this project, you know, in the fall, spring, you know, sometime, sometime soon for new water treatment plant anyways. That's it.
All right. Discussion and action is necessary on La Bruchelle project is properly brought to the board.
And yeah, La Bruchelle project is, I'd say ninety-five percent done. They've got a number of the service lines completed. So the next, you know, the next board meeting probably have final pay request for it, so to submit to the state. Probably will retain it just as we're talking about with Petersburg. So there is a number of, you know, cleanup items as everybody's gone down La Bruchelle. That road has tore up, you know, long beds and, you know, still potholes where they've worked on service lines and whatnot. So there'll be some cleanup that goes over the next couple of months.
Thank you.
That's it.
Public comments online agenda is heavy. I am going to say we're going to have to go into executive session for two things, pending litigation and also personnel. So we'll do the first thing on litigation first. Executive session on pending litigation, so it's a five I L C S one twenty slash two C eleven. No, you, you both can say, say both between you guys. Would you go in executive with camera, I think you're off or not?
Yeah, I will.
Okay. You sure can.